City Council meeting of April 9, 2019. Order. And shall we stand? Councilwoman Bobbitt is going to have a prayer and lead us in the pledge.
Okay. Do you want to have a prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our kind Father, tonight we bow before you and ask for your blessing and presence here as we go about the business of the city. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone that has a public comment? Wow, we've got a full crowd tonight.
I know we do. One at a time.
One at a time. Anybody? One more time. Is there any public com-- oh, can you not hear me?
No, I just want to make sure.
Okay. Public comment. All right. We'll close that. Consent agenda. Approve the agenda for April 9, 2019. Approve the council minutes from March 26, 2019. Approve the council workshop minutes from April 2, 2019. Appointments to Utilities and Transportation Advisory Commission. Appointments to Parks, Arbor and Recreation Board. In December 2018, check registered reports and to excuse the absent of Mayor Crowder tonight. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second by Chairman. And Councilwoman Selby, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the word I want?
Motion passes unanimously.
Motion pass. Thank you very much. I'm not-- I wasn't sure I was going to make it tonight. Okay. Okay. So we're going on to the action items. Am I right?
Yep.
Right here.
Yep.
Ms. Kilgore, request permission to advertise for RFP for banking services.
Good evening. So we have been thinking about our banking services and whether or not they're meeting our needs currently, and we've decided that it's time to go out and look for new proposals. So this is requesting permission to advertise an RFP for banking services for the city. In the past, it looks like we've done it actually about every five years until the point where I came on board, and then we just haven't done it until now. So we're overdue, based on that schedule, for asking for RFPs anyway. So just asking your permission to advertise.
I just have a really silly question. On the other RFPs, did we change banks in 2005 or 2010?
No, we did not.
Other questions for Ms. Kilgore? Do we have a motion? Ms. Selby?
I move we authorize advertisement for a request for proposal for banking services.
I'll second.
I didn't hear who was second.
Michael.
Michael, okay.
I can hear you. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
What's the word I want?
All opposed.
Huh?
All opposed.
Opposed. Oh. Any opposed? Please see-- I'm not with it, you guys. I've had a rough week. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Try it again. Opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Please be good to me tonight. Mr. Gordon, well, number six, drilling contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is well number six. We think. Paul, the number is this one will skew. What this is, is well number two. It's one of the wells we're moving. It's the one that we're moving to the Maple site.
It's the one we're moving to the Maple site. Thank you, Paul. And in order to do that, we actually have to drill a test well first at the Maple site. Now, this is well number six. However, it used to be well number two. Number two is the one we're moving. And in all the language that we've used with the regulatory agencies and the funding agencies, we've used the terminology well number two. So if you choose to move forward this motion tonight, which is to award the contract to Schneider Engineering, Inc., for drilling the well, I'd ask that you use the language instead of well number six, test well number two. Okay? So with that clarification, this is an agenda bill just asking for council authorization to award that contract. We went out for bid on March 4th and 11th, opened bids on the 25th, and they came in-- Schneider and Kupman came in with a low bid for $737,529.50. This is exactly the same contractor that is currently drilling out at the CCF site. Okay? So they're going to be actually drilling the second well for us. If there are any questions?
Questions for Mr.?
Did you have a question or any good question?
Mr. Cleveland?
I'm sorry. Oh.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. Could you go back through the numbering sequence? And we don't have to go through the gory details. It might be useful if we could have something, maybe a cheat sheet.
Cheat sheet?
Yeah. Yeah. And I was thinking, you know, number as far as new to oldest or something, but we've done--
Sure.
Yeah. Keep your system that you have now. So this is well number two.
Which is now going to be called well number--
When it's drilled.
When it's drilled. When it's actually finished, become well number six.
Okay.
The well that's being replaced is well number two.
Right.
The test well contract, where they drill it to make sure it works, will be test well number two, which is what we're working on tonight.
Okay. Got it.
And we can give you a cheat sheet, because I probably need it too.
Just at this time of activity, it's just am I beh-- no, it's not a big deal, but for myself, thank you.
Question again, too. So I see our recommended action is to drill well number six. We need to award that then as to drill test well number two.
Exactly. Thank you.
Just wanted to make a clear--
Appreciate the clarification.
And with that in mind, I will motion to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with Schneider Equipment, Inc., to drill test well number two for $737,529.50 with an additional 50% contingency for a total expenditure authorization not to exceed $848,158.93.
Second.
And second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Oh, I have one question. Where is that going to be located?
It'll be located right across from our tanks and our booster station on Maple Street.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. The Lampurdy Overlay Project Engineering Design Contract with Mr. Hartwig.
We received an award from TIB to do a preservation project with-- and that project was Lampurdy Grind and do an overlay on that. So we've advertised for engineering services, and Anderson Perry was selected. This project entails grind and the grinding of the pavement and then putting in a two-inch lift, and then also making improvements to the sidewalk and the ramps, making them ADA or American Disabilities Act compliant. So we're looking at about seven ramps to be made compliant and about-- at a minimum of 700 feet of sidewalk to be replaced, the worst areas that we find, which if you've been on the north side, you've walked on the north side, you've seen where the trees have lifted the sidewalks pretty drastically. So that will be the primary area that you see work on. So if you're so inclined, I would recommend that we authorize the mayor to execute contract with Anderson Perry, design contract with Anderson Perry for-- I put it down here $42,000 just to add that little bit, the 10% coverage.
Any questions for Mr. Hartwig? Do I have a motion? Mr. Peterson?
I move to authorize administration to execute contract with Anderson Perry to design Lampurdy Overlay Project.
Second by Ms. Sherman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hartwig again.
To the design contract for the SW area trunk sewer and lift station.
We talked about this at the workshop the other night, and this is a large map, but it'll come up here sometime. But anyway, we're talking about the Southwest Trunk Sewer and Lift Station Project. JUB was selected, and they have submitted a proposal, a design proposal. This proposal-- we'll look at somewhere down in here, when we're working with property owners, to find the exact location. It'll be right in this area, to put the lift station, a large lift station, and then the trunk line will follow similar path to this, and then tie into-- go into College Avenue, and then look at a line going to the lift station up here, and then that'll intercept that lift station line and get rid of that lift station, and I'll be gravity and go with this one lift station. And we're also designing to come over here and then a future route south and crossing the highway. So for future development. A big project, but an important project. We want to have some development coming in, in this area. The city will do the design, construction will be done most likely by developers at the time. We would have some participation, because that lift station is larger than what these developments need, and it's taking care of a lift station of ours. So there'd be some involvement in our part, in the construction part. But we're fronting the design, we'll get some of that money back through development and so forth.
And I would just add, in addition to that development area, this trunk line will also serve the Auto Meadows, Commercial Drive, Meadow Brook, basically Country Estates, the whole southern portion of College Place, plus the development area. And then if the county at some point adds the UGA, the urban growth area to the south, it would also cover that, too.
Any other questions?
It's unrelated really to this motion, but cutting across that highway, I think we've discussed for the water line, we will be laying sewer then at that same time if we-- if the right--
No. 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 That contract for the water-- it'll be-- but we're going to be boring the line, so it's not critical that we do it at the same time.
Okay.
It's going to be in a specific expense for sewer, a specific expense for the water. What we did talk about, I believe, is that if we do this-- when we do the sewer crossing, we'll bore it and maybe in the same trench, put over conduit for communication, and also storm in the same trench, in the same bore.
Thank you.
What is the timeline for the design?
So-- Yeah. So the timeline for design is that we really need to wrap it up this year, so that way they can all go with construction in 2020, because there is some very interesting business leads that will come forward if we can meet the timeframe.
So is that in here somewhere that I'm just not finding in the contract that should be completed this year?
Well, I mean, that's been conveyed to them, and it's also-- it is in there. I would have--
Okay.
I would have to check it, but yeah.
And this is a complicated project, because you're looking at a lift station that could be upwards to 30 feet deep. And so you're looking with not only the depth, but you're looking at significant groundwater depending on the time of the year that you do this. So, you know, this will involve a lot of planning under your design. They do have a sub, and the sub is PBS, to help them with groundwater, environmental and that type of stuff.
Other questions? Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Peterson?
Motion authorize mayor to execute contract for JUB for $483,200 and additional 10% allowance for staff to authorize should something unexpected arise.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Selby. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hartwig?
Yeah. Yeah.
Agreement--
Yep.
--with the Wallo County to perform the chip annual chip seal program.
Chip seal. Everybody's favorite. You've got a letter on your desk, I'd like to allay any fears. We are not chip sealing Lampurdy. That is an overlay with asphalt. So that part's not. But otherwise, we are looking at chip seal program this year with the county again. The areas that were chip sealing are in your packet, but I'll go over them right now. We're looking at Southwest Sixth Street, going from west from the tennis courts, up the hill, and to the end of the cemetery on Suncrest Terrace. That part would be-- we phase one, or part one. And then Southeast Second from Ash, basically east to where the end of the school property. And then date, the whole length, from 4th to 12th, and scenic view from Central to Larch. The county's reviewed it and done their work as far as estimating the amount of labor and material that it'll take, less the chip rock. And they came up with a price of $50,906.10. But because that's just an estimate, and the quantity of oil and so forth will vary a little bit, we've added 10%, so $56,000. They've given us the quantity of rock that is-- will be needed. I'd imagine we will be coming back with a rock quote at the next council meeting. The bids are due at the end of this week, I believe, for the chip rock. So this one is just for the county's portion of around $56,000.
Questions?
I'll give a budget for chip seal around $70,000, $80,000.
I believe so. I think we lump it in. It's been around $100,000 over the years, but we-- this year we want to try to get the bypass sealed and stuff like that, so we're not using the whole bundle for that.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
An estimate would be, if you could, you could double that budget? You could triple that? Are there enough--
You've got a lot of streets to do, and typically you would-- the only ones you don't want to do are the ones that are totally shot. The old chip seal is totally shot. But, you know, you've got a lot of streets that we still have not done yet that need to be done.
So when I-- as we look into the future of what the priorities are, you're hitting the streets, heavy use, not ones that are going to chip seal that need to be replaced. How do you feel that the-- are you falling behind on that?
I don't think we're falling behind.
You feel like you're--
We have-- we have pretty much the South Hills done. You know, a lot of the interior streets are done.
And I'm not saying falling behind in that.
No.
I'm just falling behind in that do you have enough funds available to--
We've had enough funds to do this. We just haven't--
Okay.
We've had other-- we've been combining some other things that were necessary, like this year, the bike path, sealing that bike path, which hasn't been sealed at all. And so we're gradually working to toward this, and I think we've done a good job.
Oh, no. You have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just add, our chip seal program is funded directly by the real estate excise tax one revenues, so that goes directly into that. And then the other thing that I want to put on record, too, just because I hear it, is as far as why we do it, it's because, first of all, we-- our local roads are on a 200-year replacement schedule, and in order to do that, we get about extra 10 years out of doing the chip seal. So I mean, it's entertaining to ride a bike on and stuff, but it's necessary, so.
And we have changed the rock since we started. We're using the county typical rock, which is half inch. We've-- they-- their new chip seal machine has allowed us now to go back to our standard when we did it before. It was three eights, which gives you a smoother road. Not real smooth, but it's smoother than a half. Thanks.
Any other questions? More questions? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to authorize the mayor to execute agreement with the Wallo County to perform the city's 2019 chip seal program in an amount not to exceed $56,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Selby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Carrie. All right. Revision of 3.36 donation code, Mr. Ristel.
Okay, thank you. So with this proposal, it's just revising our donation code to reflect current trends, if you will. All of those is the donations below $10,000. I'll still let council know and give a report, but I can accept it on behalf of the city as long as it dovetails with goals, objectives, strategic plan, comprehensive plan, all of our plans. Anything above $10,000 goes directly to council for approval. This also sets forth essentially dealing with non-monetary donations, same value thresholds, and then also what constitutes, what should be on the form for folks donating. Some things that were added is just whoever is donating, that if they're representing an employer or organization, that's put on there, so that way in the future can be tracked who's donating what. And then same thing with professional services, and that the finance department will give-- will be responsible for records. There'll be a receipt issued. Very standard code. This mimics pretty much identically what was done in coal facts, so.
Okay, questions? Oh. You explained it good. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to adopt ordinance number 19-014, which repeals and replaces chapter 3.36, donations of the College Place Municipal Code.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you. We're going right along here now. Mr. Hartwig again, agreement to study SBR, Conventional Treatment Process. We should have just let you stay there, Paul.
I guess so. This is my last one.
Seven. Okay. There we go.
Again, back in 2000-- well, back in 1995-ish, there was a committee that was formed to-- in regards to the new plant, and they decided on an SBR or sequential batch reactor, not a treatment plant. That's been difficult to operate and keeping compliance over the years. And in looking at this, and as we're going into looking at improvements to the treatment plant, we thought it would be wise to look at a convert-- the possibility of converting it back to a conventional treatment plant operation. There's advantages to that. It's simpler to operate. It's less energy used to operate a conventional plant, and it's better for the types of flow that we have. SBRs are made for a consistent flow, not only a rate, but a quality, and we have neither. And so we'd be better to go to a conventional plant. To do that, we did this facility plan amendment, and we got that through, but we need to now talk and discuss with DOE about the possibility, if they're going to have any problems, with converting to the conventional treatment process. And that's what this study will do. They'll look at all the advantages, disadvantages, costs, and that type of information, and make a recommendation to ecology and find out if they're in support of this. I think it's $35,000 well spent to do this study, and especially it will save us on energy costs and complicated treatment process, so.
Questions? Ms. Selby?
Well, I basically have more of a comment. Ever since the first time I toured the plant, I was like, why do you have an SBR? So I would really, really like to move that we authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with JUB to evaluate the conversion from an SBR to conventional treatment at the Waismark Treatment Plant.
Second. Thank you.
Second by Councilwoman Bobbitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig.
All right. Mr. Gordon?
Can I have a minute, say that she really moved that?
C Street Project--
I have strong feelings about Waismark Treatment.
Yes.
Thank you. This is for the award of the C Street Project contract award. Actually, it's to reject all bids. We received-- we went out for advertising on March 12, 17, and 24. We opened bids last Thursday on the 4th, and we had four very good bids come in. The low bidder was Total Site Services. The next lowest bid was Colbert Construction. You can read your agenda, Bill, there in front of you. What happened was, is in our contract specifications, or in our contract, we were planning on putting in conduit for future telecommunications along one side of the street, as well as pull boxes. And Colbert came forward with a protest, I think it was on Friday, the day after we opened bids, and said, you know, that's electrical work. You need an electrical contractor. And Total Site Services did not list them as a contractor, and that's a requirement of your bid process, so we protested. So we looked at it. We looked at it with the city attorney. We did some calling around, and we believe the best way forward on this, the way to resolve it the most quickly, is go ahead and reject all bids and go back out for advertisements. That means it kind of erases all of the issues. It kind of addresses them. We modify our specifications appropriately, and we move forward. So coming forward tonight to ask for authorization to reject all the bids we just received and go back out for advertising, that'll be a 15-day, calendar day minimum advertisement period. Because the way it sits in our schedule, you may get a call asking for a special counsel to convene so that we can approve this, so we can save maybe up to two weeks in the construction schedule. We want to get it done this year. So with that said--
Questions?
Will you just explain that? Is there a bid difference? And I know we're going to reject these, so it's all going to be a clean slate if this is approved, but the variation, some of these bids included that electrical and some did not, would you say?
Colbert Construction, I believe, had an electrical-- either subcontractor or were themselves holding that license.
Okay.
Total Site Services did not.
Okay. I see.
So they would-- their argument was that we had-- you know, our bid was higher because we were anticipating the need for that.
I see. Are you?
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor or city administrator to reject all bids for the C Street Project construction.
Ms. Sherman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Peterson. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we finished?
Yeah.
Are we--
Just like that.
I'm going to be mayor every week.
We won't be the next mayor.
That's true. I had a comment this week about what a wonderful city staff we had, and I had to say, amen, amen, because we really do. We really appreciate you. We do, all of you, and this council. It's been quite-- we have quite a wonderful little town here, folks, and no measles. Isn't that something? We need to keep them in our prayer. 200 cases, yes.
I would like to just make a short-- I was talking to a couple of my freshmen today, and one of them was like, I have lived here all my life, and the last couple of years, things are really happening here. This place is turning into a cool place. And I was like, thank you. No, actually, I told them--
I've come to the council.
I told them that it was because of Harvey and Mike and our great staff.
That's true.
Stuff's happening.
That's true. That's true. Well, I appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Have a wonderful, wonderful week, all of you.
Wow.
Wow, wow. You need to ask yourself. You need to give your chance, and I'd like for you to get some pizza. How many people--